All right, we are called to order. It's a great day in Kershaw County and it's all-American county. We have Mr. Bozard, who will not be joining us today, and we have Mr. Conell coming in by a virtual presence on telephone, and we will conduct it remotely for him and anyone else who's listening. We have everybody present and ready to go, and I ask you to join me just briefly in a moment of silence. We have lost a person in Minneapolis, and then we've lost some police and others that have been damaged in a time of tumult in our county and in our nation, and I ask for a moment of silence for peace in our country, in our land, and in our people. Lastly, I should ask you to consider we've had one more death from this terrible pandemic, and let's remember that person and their families. Amen. We're now called to order, would you rise for the invocation and the pledge of allegiance? As it says in Psalm 33, blessed is the nation whose God is the Lord, and our Lord himself has given us a guidance about love thy neighbor, and that's kind of the whole point of the thing, isn't it? So, join me in asking our Lord for peace to our land, and end to this scourge of this virus, and also a healing of our people. And finally, we give thanks to the Lord and bless Him for this opportunity today to help small business and to continue the great work we've begun over the years in providing quality health care to our people, and that we meet today in all to His honor and glory, this we ask in His name. Amen.
Amen.
Join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic, where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We'll move very quickly to the adoption of the agenda, and I'll explain once again why we are having a call meeting. We have two items broken down into three separate discussion points for votes. All three are voting items that need to be done by tomorrow, and indeed should be done today so that we can act on them tomorrow, and we'll get into that in a moment. Can we have a motion to approve the agenda?
Make a motion we approve, Mr. Chairman.
Now, Mr. Tucker, a second.
Second.
A second for Mr. Snodgrass, discussion. Again, under this state of emergency, we're authorized to do this remotely. Thank you, gentlemen, for coming in so quickly on an item that could not have waited.
Would you include Ben, please?
I will. In what respect?
Well, I don't think he can hear.
He should be able to hear.
I just got a text.
All right. Let's figure out why this thing's not working.
It's been on mute.
Well, it's on mute, but, Ben, can you hear us now?
Yeah, I can hear you.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, we've got Ben now. And you've got a 19th-century chairman operating in the 21st century. So, we're now at the point, Ben, where we're approving the agenda, and we have a first and a second. Any discussion on the agenda? And Ben, I've explained why we have called this meeting, a special call meeting that could not wait till the 9th of June, which is our next regular scheduled meeting. All right, with all that said, let's first take a vote from Ben. You approve the agenda?
I vote yes.
Oh, yes, and all others signify by raising your hand. We have it unanimous with Mr. Bozard not present. So, we'll move now to old business, and I'll look to the Small Business Stabilization Grant Program. We have a copy in your electronic version on pages 3 through 32, 22, 3 through 22, of the previously approved ordinance that allowed us to move forward with a small business grant and with aid to the nonprofits. Mr. Tucker, I believe you have a motion.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Thank you so very much. I'd like to make a motion that we amend our emergency ordinance to where we could give additional funding to our SBSGP committee.
Can you be specific about the amount, please?
$60,000 from the Disaster Relief Fund into the Small Business Stabilization Committee so they can finish round three, and I'll be happy to go on further discussion.
Oh, yeah, we will. But I want to be specific. It's not from the Disaster Reserve Fund. It's money taken from the Disaster Reserve Fund, given to the Small Business Grant Program. Is that correct?
No, it's coming from the Disaster Reserve Fund, not from the nonprofit now.
The source of the funds would be the Disaster Reserve Fund we previously took a million from. You would now raise it to a total of $1,060,000.
Right.
All right. Okay.
Thank you.
Oh, that's good. That's clarification. Everybody understand that? And I think that's expressed in the whereas on the second there. Can we have a second, please?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Sammy, take us through this, please.
Okay. What has happened is that the Stabilization Grant Committee and Mrs. Amy Kiner, they're in the round three now, and they've done a magnificent job, and I've gotten a lot of phone calls and so have y'all on people who are happy, and they've really spread this money out. If you recall, we were debating at one point what to make that level of money to be, and I'm proud to say as of today, even what we set it at 7,500, they have not given out that amount to anyone. They've been very conservative about how much money these businesses receive to try to spread the goodness around, and I appreciate that, Chairman Lee and Mrs. Amy and the committee. So, they're needing about $60,000 to be able to pretty much sum up round three and honor pretty close to 90 something percent of the request, not counting the ones that's disqualified. This is what has come in, and I think round three had the smallest amount of applicants, but there was still more than what funds they had left over.
Okay. Further discussion? Welcome Amy Kiner and John Lee. Good to see you again, both of you.
I have a question.
Mr. Gardner.
How many businesses were granted multiple grants? Zero.
Yeah.
The answer was none. Okay. I'm doing this for Ben's sake. All right.
Yeah, thank you for that, Chairman.
Mr. Jones.
Yes, I want to go on the record as saying that I wasn't real pleased at the first meeting, the way we got things kicked off, but I am absolutely thrilled at what Amy and the Chairman Lee have done going into round two and round three. And I just think maybe probably round one was a lot of miscommunication, misunderstanding, but I've had a lot of phone calls as well, and people have had some kind words to say. And there's been some people who don't understand certain things about when you have to provide certain information, but it is what it is, and I said you just need to go and provide the information. And you two, appreciate y'all so much on what you did for the folks in Kershaw County on behalf of this county council.
Thank you. Let me see if Mr. Conell has a point.
Yes, sir.
Ben, do you want to enter in, or should I pass around the mic?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Quick question for clarification. So, this is overall a proposed additional $60,000 that would go to other businesses that have not yet received funds, is that right?
That's correct.
Sammy, would you answer that, please?
Yes, Mr. Conell, that is correct. These will be your third round applicants who have not received any funding, and if I could read what her report is that's dated from today's date on round three, they have approximately $225,000 remaining. Deferred to round three was 87 applicants with a request totaling $606,088. New applications, 14, with requests of about $87,000. Paperwork outstanding is about 12 applicants, no documents, eight applicants with partial payment, and mailed six certified letters out. So, that is where she's at. So, they've got a request for about $700,000, and they're trying to wrap this up by doing it less than $300,000.
Mr. Chairman, is there any, or Mr. Tucker, is there any remaining balance in the nonprofit allotment?
Yes, sir. And I had the conversation with the administrator. He had had some additional requests that has come in for his round two, and also he's very concerned of this pandemic, this virus that we in, and wanting to save a little bit of that money for PPE because we don't know how long we're going to be masked up, sanitized down, and all those good things. So, we're not touching that funds so he can, and these folks for the nonprofit are new applicants. They're not repeat applicants as well. Am I correct, Mr. Carpenter, by saying that? That's four?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Let me see if Mr. Conell is satisfied. Go ahead, Ben.
Yes, sir. What's the actual balance remaining in the nonprofit account after all applications have been received so far?
It's about $85,000.
I didn't hear that.
The answer was $85,000.
And we're allotting that money assigned to what exactly?
What was this question?
What are you allotting it for? Just second round, PPE and second round?
Yeah, second round for nonprofits coming in who either have, did not apply in the first round, or have determined that their needs have shown up. So, these are reserving it so some of the nonprofits, they get into the summer, may be suddenly struggling to meet needs, especially if there's an increase in the virus, if we have a spike starting back in the summer, just having the ability to respond to them.
Can I add to that, please?
Yeah, please, Mr. Tucker.
Mr. Conell, if you can hear me, also, I'm aware of a few nonprofits that actually shut down during the virus, so they did not apply because they weren't open, but now they're back opening, and as Mr. Carpenter stated, they're realizing, you know, what they're needing to operate safely within our community, and their demand has picked up. So, that's the reason why they're just going into the second round, but they didn't want to falsely apply first round when their doors was not open.
And I would also say that if 60 is taken from the remaining and 60 ultimately is put back in from the nonprofit, it still ends up going to the same place. So, whether we took 60 from the nonprofit and used it for the small business, or took 60 from the fund and put 60 back in, if it wasn't spent, it's just a matter of, it'll still balance out to the same amount of money. I just am requesting that we keep that available to us if we need to respond quickly.
Okay, Ben, any further?
No other questions.
Thank you. Other comments? Mr. Jones has his hand up.
Quickly, just a couple of quick questions. What's the balance, if this 60 passes tonight, what would be the balance in the Disaster Relief Fund?
$1,440,000.
Okay. And the $60,000, that will, I'm sure that will probably meet the needs, Ms. Kiner, Chairman, correct? I think this is no-brainer.
Okay. Further discussion? I think all of us would join in thanking Chairman John Lee and Amy.
Yes, sir.
And the whole team.
Absolutely.
I would tell you that they are going to return here for further punishment on the 9th of June and give us a final report, the aim of which is to close this out, if I'm correct, Mr. Carpenter, so that Sandra can balance her books before the end of the fiscal year, correct?
Correct.
All right. This would be the final action that I at least foresee unless one of the councilmen has an idea we should bring up next week, okay? All right. Sammy, real quick.
Yes, sir. Quick, Mr. Chairman, I just want to make sure that on item number four in our ordinance there, they've already got this instruction, the committee, but I just want to make it real clear. I know you've set guidelines, Chairman Lee and Ms. Amy, for people to get their paperwork in. Your time's going to be up June 20th, and so if you need to redistribute the funds to people who have paperwork in and didn't meet their request and they still have demands, this council understands that. We, excuse me, we're not interested in extending past round three, nor extending the date. Just want to make that clear, so.
Yeah, let me read that for Ben. I didn't realize we had a lengthy document here. Ben, standing by here. I'll go to the items that Sammy just mentioned, that in item four, in distributing remaining funds for grants to small businesses, including the $60,000 herein appropriated, the Oversight Committee shall distribute the funds in accordance with established criterion guidelines to existing small business applicants. As Sammy has said, that's already in the guidance we passed out in April. Item number five, that this ordinance is effective immediately and will expire on the expiration date of the emergency ordinance, which is 20 June. Is that correct, Mr. Tucker?
Yes, sir, that's correct, Mr. Chairman.
And item six, that except is amended, is affirmed and restated. Ben, any further questions, sir?
No.
Okay, thank you. We just got this this morning, this afternoon. With that, I think we can go to a vote. First of all, Ben, your vote, sir?
I vote yes.
Yes, and all others signify by raising your hand, and it's unanimous, and Mary passes, and Amy and John, thank you so much. Wash your hands. All right, good. Now, we come up to a series of two resolutions, items one and two, they're at B and C, and let me just review for you what's in your package. Vic and I have discussed how I might do a preamble before we get into it, because this kind of captures the context for everybody. First of all, on page 23 through 32 is what's known as a transition agreement. Up on the screen, for those of you seeing the screen, that's item, that's the resolution for item 23, for page 23, on the transition agreement. So, that takes us through page 32, and it has two parts to it. The first part is the actual transition agreement, and the second is a resolution that I'm required to read, which I will do, and I will read that as a part of this discussion. I've got my best voice on. And then the second grouping on item number two at tab C, and you don't need to put it up, Danny, is the Kershaw Health Services District Bridge Payment, and that has three parts. The first on page 33, if you're watching, is a resolution, and it's about in this same format, very simple. And then pages 34 to 38 is an agreement between us and the Health Services District. And then the third item under this part two of this discussion is a letter very helpfully sent by Daryl Augman that you all received the day he, the day after he approved it on Monday night, which allowed us to move forward, and that's on page 39. You've all seen that one-page resolution voted unanimously by the Kershaw Health Services District. So, that's what's in play today, is a vote on the transition agreement, and secondly, a vote on the bridge pay on page 33. Now, let me just give you some background, and then we'll get right into the work that I've asked y'all to help us do today. Recall that this body authorized Mr. Carpenter and Mr. Tucker and myself to negotiate a way forward on the hospital with a focus on quality health care and EMS. I'm happy to say we have an agreement, and with your agreement today and the legal advice from Mr. Tommy Morgan and Mr. Ken DeBose, excuse me, we will be able to move forward if this body approves it, subject to council approval. That preamble also extracts the following benefits for the county. It allows us to agree with PRISM and accept their request that we would remove our appeal. Secondly, LifePoint has agreed to come across with $925,000, which is one year of FLO agreement for the year 2021, and that allows us to continue EMS in the manner which we had begun. And we see Gerald Blanchard here. Thank you, sir, for being here and your team. The second piece is on part two, is to accept the offer from our Kershaw County Health Services District, which has been around for about 70 years, to give us a half a million dollars in the year 2022 towards our EMS payments. And with all that in motion, we have a number of other things to do, but those are the top-end issues. And what I would propose that this body now do is that we go into item one and put it before the table, and y'all ask your questions. I have Mr. DeBose and Mr. Carpenter here to take us through it. So, with that, I am going to read the resolution, and then I'm going to read item, excuse me, this is a little difficult, the public announcement on page 30 and page 30. So, here we go. Starting on the first page with the resolution that's before you on page 23, a resolution approving and authorizing the execution of a transition agreement by and among Kershaw County, Kershaw Hospital LLC, Kershaw Clinics LLC, and Kershaw Health, and the Health Services District of Kershaw County, in approving and authorizing the execution of Exhibit A attached. So, I now move to Exhibit A. Sorry, fellows, I just got fat fingers. On page 30 on your, and I don't think it'll help for them to see it, because I'm going to go through it very quickly. So, let's.
Put it on the board.
I'm sorry?
Put it on the board.
You'd like to put it on?
Yes.
Okay. If you can go to page 30.
I don't have all these.
You don't have it, Danny?
Then don't put it on the board.
Jimmy, I can put it up on my.
It's okay. No, no, no.
Okay, good. I'm going to read it. Exhibit A, Resolution of the Kershaw County Council, and it talks about the undersigned, et cetera, et cetera. And then the key points are, the first paragraph, whereas Kershaw County is a body politic and corporate subdivision of the state of South Carolina acting by and through its governing body, this council. Item two, whereas Kershaw Health, the Health Services District, is a special purpose district and political subdivision of the state of South Carolina charged with doing all matters necessary or convenient for the construction, establishment, and maintenance of a hospital for the benefit of the public residing in the county, big words, and having knowledge of the factors contributing to the health care of the residents of this county. And skipping down, whereas the district and Kershaw entered into that certain lease agreement on October 30th, 2015, pursuant to which Kershaw Health, LifePoint leased from the district, said real property, on initial term of 40 years. And whereas the district has found, and the county believes, that the acquisition has the potential to create long-term stability for the county's health care delivery system as it will place the health care assets in the hands of a well-respected, South Carolina-based nonprofit provider, that is PRISM, which will give the county's residents access to the full continuum of coordinated, locally-delivered health care services. And whereas the council has been assured that PRISM is committed to honor the remaining obligations contained within the asset purchase agreement and the lease, including the continued maintenance of the hospital as an acute care hospital in this county, the provision of certain core health care services, and the commitment to make capital investments in the county's health care delivery system. Further, whereas the acquisition will place the county's hospital in a South Carolina-based system with significant scale, skipping down, whereas the acquisition will ensure that the hospital's back office support is local, skipping down, whereas the acquisition enables a patient that presents for treatment in this county to have seamless transition to the highest levels of care if needed, skipping down, whereas the acquisition will help recruit physicians and other staff to serve the county's patients. Going over to the next page, which I'm losing track, whereas PRISM prioritizes its clinical staff, as addressed, to pay, whereas pursuant to its COPA, PRISM is required to make a tithe, which means it must spend 15% of its excess revenue over expenses on community health benefit projects. Whereas for the foregoing reasons, the council supports the acquisition and desires to express and demonstrate its support for the acquisition, that's a key phrase, now therefore be it resolved that pursuant to applicant law, the council hereby directs that the council chairman is authorized and empowered and directed to express publicly on behalf of this council the council's support for the acquisition pending regulatory approval, including but not limited to communicating with any agency or entity as determined necessary and appropriate, and by participating in any proceedings or interviews pertaining to the acquisition, and be it further resolved that the council chair is authorized to take such other and further actions as may be necessary to express the council's support for this acquisition. So, with that, I think with your permission, we'll move to a motion. Can we have a motion to approve the resolution and Exhibit A as read?
I'll make a motion.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Snodgrass. A second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Tucker, and I'm sure there'll be questions. Let me give a promise to the first and second, then we'll go to Mr. Conell remotely, and then we'll have other questions. Mr. Snodgrass, do you want to take us on the lead?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a question for the county attorney. So, I see, I see language about the tithe in the whereas parts of this agreement, so, and I think that's part of this whole, we've kind of been on a journey here, you know, trying to get clarification and trying to just get an understanding of what all the expectations are going to be of PRISM and us and all the parties involved. So, do we have clarification on, is that tithe now in that COPA language, or we're, it's kind of a good faith that it's going to be there as we move forward?
Mr. Snodgrass, the tithe is part of the transaction and part of the purchase by PRISM. They do that. That's what they do. But really, you have to concentrate on how you determine 15%.
Okay.
It's revenue minus expenses.
Right, right. I understand.
And so, that would determine how much money is available.
Sure. Sure. And honestly, it's not, it's not so much about money as much as just, just that language being there, because that was, for me, that was kind of one of the sticking points that of why I say, hey, let's put a caution on this, because there was discrepancies, if you will, in the COPA, and there was language about, you know, the tithe, and Kershaw County was not involved in that. So, I feel like we've gotten to a place where there's a clear understanding on all those details. Would you, would you agree with that?
Yes, but how much, the amount is available for the tithe?
Right.
And how they distribute it is still.
Is still their purview.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
But we would be subject to getting some of it. We'd be eligible.
All right.
Finished, David?
Yes.
Over to Mr. Tucker. Have a second?
Yes, and that was part of where I was going to ask as well. We don't know whether we're going to get 15% of the 15% or what, because that has to be determined by PRISM, where those monies are going to be spent and how much that is. My other question was dealing with, let me throw my notes right here, and I may have to yield, Mr. Chairman. Oh, the capital investments. We're still got whatever the balance is, 35, 40 million, depending on who you ask, that needs to be invested. That is still in place, according to what I'm reading here.
The agreement between the Health District and the original purchaser, the lease agreement, the lease purchase agreement, does contain language that I think is minifold, but two of the folds are that they will maintain an acute care facility.
Right.
That they will maintain other facilities, and it does have investment numbers in it. I haven't looked at it in a long time, but I believe the number might be 50 million.
The initial number.
Yes, in the purchase agreement.
Yes, sir.
And the timeframe is different than our fee in lieu of tax.
Right.
So, it's going to go back to what their obligation is in the lease purchase agreement as far as investment and the timeframe. But they, in these documents, say, they, meaning PRISM and the Health District, say that that is going to be honored. They're assuming the lease.
Right.
So, they're assuming those obligations.
I just want to make sure that I'm clear, because I know there's a balance there, that they haven't done the 50 million. They've done some, but, and that that doesn't get kicked to the side.
Yeah, but timeframe is not over yet.
Right.
They still have a number of years.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to go to Mr. Conell, and then everyone else can speak. Ben?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Heaven. So, just to recap, we recently voted in favor of filing an appeal primarily based on a notice and procedural issue with DHEC. Is that right, Mr. DeBose?
We filed an appeal based on that, but also that was part of it, not following procedure, but we also filed the appeal based on our need for some kind of bridge funds. That was part of, I think, the original letter and resolution, but it was also procedural. We said you didn't follow your own procedure. Yes, that is true. Mr. Conell?
All right. Thanks for that. Thanks for that refresh, or so. Overall, if other parties involved, or the Kershaw County even, continued with the appeal, and they pursued the appeal at each appellate level, how long could that process take?
It could take several years, and in the event we were successful, that what we very well might get would be DHEC just opening the process up for public comment and going through the COPA process again, rather than amending the COPA. So a victory very well might not be that they can't do the deal, it would just be delayed.
So that, that would, if we were successful, that would result in possibly public comments if it was opened up to that, and none of those public comments will be binding on Prisma or any other entity purchasing of their COPA for that matter. Overall, Mr. Chairman, in view of links that it would delay, and what the net effect of a win on appeal based on a procedural basis would give the county, I don't think that we could get any better result for the citizens of Kershaw County than what's proposed before us. The other question I have is, this is contingent, is any of this contingent what was just read on the deal with Prisma and Kershaw Health closing in 2020?
The, if you read it, it's, Mr. Conell, if you read it, it says that a condition precedent, the parties agreed that the closing of the Prisma transaction is a condition precedent to the agreements contained herein, and it says, and the closing of the Prisma transaction shall be upon the current of the execution of all documents necessary to effectuate the acquisition, in assumption of the lease agreement. But there's no time limit put on that. It says.
Okay, but, but it's not limited to a particular year? It's not limited to 2020, the next six months?
No time limit. It says, is condition precedent of them closing the transaction, but there's no closing date specified in the document. No outside closing date.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mr. DeBose.
Let me expand on that, Ben. If it's not closed by 2021, then the current holder, which is LifePoint, continues in those fee-low payments. Correct, Mr. DeBose?
That would be correct. If it's not closed by then, then the fee-in lieu of tax agreement continues.
Current agreement.
Yes.
Current agreement.
Yes.
Still pertains. Okay, Ben? All right, good. Other comments? Seeing there are none, let me just make a couple of points. Procedurally, yeah, I'm sorry. Go right ahead.
I was just thinking about something. A couple of things. One, I think this is a good day for us. It's a very good day, because we're going to go ahead and hopefully have the vote to withdraw the appeal, which I opposed. And I know there's some talk about the COPA at the last meeting and this meeting, but to my understanding, the COPA, Mr. DeBose, wasn't it said that the COPA had not been updated in a while? It was said that at the last meeting, correct?
Oh, it was originally issued a long time ago.
Ninety-six.
Yes. In regard to the original merger of Baptist Hospital and what was then Rich Memorial.
So we were saying that it hadn't been updated.
Well, it's the same, it's the same COPA.
I understand, but, but the word I had gotten, I've done some research, that it has been updated.
DHEC has authorized it to be used later, so.
I'm just telling you.
It's a matter of how you interpret it, yeah.
Well, I'm just telling you what I was told when I did some research, that the COPA had been updated, but we were talking as if it hadn't been. And, you know, so I just had a couple of issues with that, because there seems to be a question in there about it. And the monies are getting thin, but one other thing that just kind of bothers me a little bit is that we would certainly have lost nine hundred and fifty thousand dollars if this deal had not gone the way it has. No question about that. But for us to sit here and say that it would have jeopardized EMS is just unrealistic. I don't think there's a council member up here that would have closed one single EMS station, and we would have found the money to make it work. I just have a hard time understanding us throwing that out there. It's almost like we're trying to create anxiety and fear or whatever. That's just, to me, not, not a true statement. I just don't think this county council would, would do that, regardless if we had a million-dollar shortfall or not. You know, when we can go back and, what's our total budget this year, Mr. Carpenter?
The general fund is about twenty-eight million.
Twenty-eight million. And at the very peak of our reserve, it would be probably fifteen million at the highest point.
I don't think it's that high, it's twelve, fourteen.
Okay, and also, we've been very successful through your leadership in creating a disaster relief fund of two-point-five million. We've been very successful in your leadership in creating a two-million-dollar capital reserve fund. Am I correct? We have. It's pretty good. So what I'm seeing is I just don't think in this nonsense about that EMS was in jeopardy, EMS was never in jeopardy. Now, would we have some tough decisions to make? Absolutely. And we would have made those tough decisions. Every one of us up here would have. But EMS would have never, never, ever been in jeopardy. And I support this tonight. I think this is, I commend everybody who had a part in it. It's turned out really good for the citizens of Kershaw County, because if this had lingered on, and I know, Mr. Snodgrass, you agree with this part, if it had lingered on, it could have been bad for Kershaw County, because if Prisma had pulled out, we may end up getting some bottom feeder coming up and purchasing the hospital, and, you know, just not the greatest health care in the world as we will get with, I think, with Prisma. But anyway, I thank everybody involved. As I said, I'm going to support this, and I think it's the right thing to do for us to go ahead and move forward and put this behind us. Thank you.
All right. Mr. Gardner?
I have a question. How does our stance, Kershaw County, in relation to the appeal by Lexington and Fairfield, how does that affect the deal? Or does it not affect the deal for us? Or is that a group one deal? Or, you know, does it affect the deal?
Mr. Gardner, I think it probably does affect the closing date, because if you look at the definition, I just read condition precedent, and it says, execution of all documents necessary to effectuate the acquisition. And so I don't know how Prisma is dealing with the other parties, Fairfield, Lexington, and City of Columbia, which have all appealed. I think their appeals are still outstanding.
So there would, so Prisma would go ahead and make the deal with us, and we would proceed while they, the others appealed, and they waited on those decisions?
I, I don't know what other conditions they're going to have to close. I don't, I don't know that. I mean, they could wa, I don't know. But I do know that there are other appeals out there. Ours will, if this is approved, ours will be withdrawn. But what happens to the Fairfield County, the Lexington, and the City of Columbia appeals, I don't know.
I guess the bottom line is, what I'm trying to get to is, we withdraw our appeal as Prisma, whenever the deal is done, go ahead and take over our hospital, and then they deal with Fairfield and the rest, is what I'm saying. Or is that going to hold up them completing the deal with us?
It could very well hold up them completing the deal with us, but I don't know that. But it very well could, yes.
Okay. Well, I think that's important, because I think we're, to me, it would be important if I were LifePoint, because if the others don't get the deal done, and they, you know, it goes into 2021, 2022, or what have you, then they're going to owe us some more money. So, but anyway, that's a point I thought that it might make a difference with the others who are appealing, so. Thank you.
Okay. Some closing points. Go to page twenty-five. Ken, I think you'll see we have a B, we have two As and a B.
I don't have the same numbering you've got, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, can you make sure that when it comes into B, that the Scrivener error there is correct?
Is that on the transition agreement?
Yes.
Okay.
Page twenty-five. So you all sort that out.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah. Go ahead, Ben.
Actually, one comment on the, on the first A, this is page twenty-five, as you're saying, agreement, part two, A dismissal of appeal.
Yeah.
I just want to make sure that we're aware of how this should be interpreted. Along with the dismissal of the appeal, we talked about any subsequent or additional actions would not be pursued by the county. So say this deal occurs, and it wasn't, you know, the deal dropped by Kershaw County, if there's an issue with the COPA in the future, like the funds weren't being reinvested appropriately, we felt, or just some other issue with the public benefit agreement, I just need to know from my legal counsel whether or not we would be waiting under that section and be contested if we needed to, or at some point, accounts in future need to.
Let me just make sure everybody understood that, because it was a little bit gobbled, Ben. I think you're referring to two A, dismissal of the appeal, and the stipulation dismissal with prejudice. Is that correct?
No, not dismissal with prejudice. Can you hear me okay?
Yeah, I got you now. Go ahead.
Okay. Not the dismissal with prejudice, that would be to the appeal only. The subsequent sentences talk about how the county wouldn't file any subsequent or additional actions, requests for contested case appeals, et cetera, related to the COPA. So it doesn't limit it just to this transaction. Say that after this transaction, there was some problem the county fell it had with how the COPA was being administered, or the reinvestment requirement under the COPA. But I just need to know from my legal counsel, would that language that we're talking about in two A prevent us from making a legal complaint or otherwise pursuing the rights of Kershaw County citizens?
Okay. We had a lot of discussion about that. Ken, if you would lead that off, please.
Well, Mr. Conell, if you look up at the whereas, which are all findings, which are incorporated in the agreement, one of the whereas, which is on the second page of the agreement.
Page twenty-five, Ben.
Top, says that whereas on February twenty-eighth, the department issued its decision that the conditions of the COPA would be amended to provide for the acquisition of the assets, LifePoint assets, as defined in Prisma's letter to the department requesting a review of the proposed Prisma transaction upon consummation. So the agreement is, is related to us not opposing the acquisition by Prisma of the LifePoint assets under the terms of the agreement to purchase them, or the COPA, which was amended to apply to that. So this agreement relates to that, the acquisition and the COPA.
Yeah.
As relate to the acquisition.
And to be clear about it, I was going to make that a point as we close, is Mary, I want to make sure that point, as stated by Ken, is copied in our minutes. It's not a trivial issue if this deal doesn't go down, kind of using my language. Other points?
Just one quick one.
Jimmy, go right ahead.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, members of the county council. I need to also say a big shout-out for Darrell Ogborne. He's worked very hard, the Kershaw Health District, or they've worked very hard, and I'm very proud of what Darrell was able to pull together, because I know he was on the phone day after day after day, and he was contacting a lot of folks on this county council, trying to keep everybody up to date. And just wanted to say publicly thank you to him.
Yep.
I think he was, he was a huge part of this.
Yeah, Mr. Tucker?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That brings up an interesting point. I know you want to get to your closing part. But, Mr. DeBose, can you explain why we're, we've got the language in there of, without, with prejudice that we're in this document? Where the whereas makes that not as a bad deal as I may be thinking it is?
Well, if you have a dismissal, and it's not with prejudice, you could file it again. You could dismiss it today. Of course, the time's up. So I don't know that that's a distinction that has a difference, because if you dismiss your appeal, then the time for appeal is up. So I think that might be a distinction that doesn't have a lot of difference. In other words, if you dismissed your appeal, you couldn't refile it, because the time would be up.
Right.
And so, but that's just words lawyers use. It means you can't file it again. But it also goes beyond that, Mr. Tucker, and everybody's correct about that. It says you're not going to oppose the transaction in any other manner. And other manners could include, you could claim it's a monopoly, could claim that. So it goes beyond the COPA. It says COPA, it says you're not going to, in any way contest us purchasing it, by filing any kind of action in any other kind of court based on any other law. And there are other laws that you could potentially contest this on.
Okay?
Potentially.
Thank you.
All right. We're going, I'm ready to move forward on the vote, because we need to get to the second part, to Mr. Jones's point about Mr. Darrell Ogborne and his role in that, which would be the second part of this. I do want to close out with a couple of things. This was hard fought, but we entered this negotiation with the idea, based on the guidance we had from council, that this be a win-win. And that's always a good thing, is that everyone, all the parties to the negotiation see value for themselves, as well as value to our county, and our county EMS, and to our voters and our taxpayers. And with this, there would not need to be delving into reserves that are important for disasters and things of that nature. Secondly, it's right in line with Vision 2030. It's good for business, it's good for the health services of our county, and as you heard me read in the Annex A, Exhibit A of the agreement, you can see what we're getting with Prisma and continuity of health care, quality of health care. It's good for us all. Negotiation's been very hard, been very difficult, been controversial, as it ought to be, because it's important. And as I've said before, it's not always necessary that we just, that we agree, but we base on matters of fact, and health care has been changed, and the COPA was our leverage, as Mr. Snodgrass has pointed out. It was our ability to be expressed, to be heard. That's what the A means, public advantage, A meaning advantage. I thank you for your support, and I especially thank Vic Carpenter, who took a lot of help, shall we say, from all sides. And Vic, I appreciate this very much, and I hope you take tomorrow off after. I saw you celebrated already by getting a haircut. And I thank especially Tommy Morgan and Ken DeBose. This is very reminiscent of last summer of 2015. So with that, I'm ready to go to vote, asking first from Mr. Conell. How do you vote, sir?
I vote yes.
And all others, kind of indicate by raising your hand if you're in support. And Mary, record that as unanimous, please. We move to the item number two, if you can get that up. It's on the board. And I propose we go kind of the same way. I'll try to encapsulate it, and then we'll ask for a motion, and we'll talk about it. If you'll go to page thirty-three on your, on your electronic tablets, you'll see what I'm about to read, and if I can get to it myself. Without Mary's help, I would be lost. Thank you, Mary. There it is. It's a resolution. And then if you'll look at page, the page right behind it, thirty-four, and thirty-five, and thirty-six, thirty-seven, and thirty-eight is the actual agreement. It's entitled Bridge Payment Agreement. I don't propose to read from that. It's pretty straightforward in legal terms. But then I cite the last page that I want you to look at, is page thirty-nine, and I will read that, and then we'll go to the item for action. As background, I want you to know we got a resolution from the Kershaw County Health Services District Monday night. It was immediately put in council hands, and the resolution of the board trustees of the Kershaw, of the Health Services District of Kershaw County, whereas the Health Services District believes that in the best interest of the citizens of the county, that Prisma Health acquire the assets. And then skipping down to the second whereas, and that the district recognizes that this acquisition will negatively impact the revenues of Kershaw County government used to operate EMS. Therefore, the Health Services District of Kershaw County authorizes disbursement of five hundred thousand dollars from appropriate accounts within its control to the Kershaw County in the fiscal year 2022 to assist the county, and so on. Furthermore, Health Services District in Kershaw Health, Kershaw County authorizes its chairman to enter into any unnecessary binding and legal agreement required to effectuate this disbursement. And on that sentence, that's the reason we're here today, Mr. DeBose says we can't just accept money from anybody in the street, we got to vote on it. So, and I agree with him. So let me read the action resolution. So, let me read the action resolution, and, uh, and then I'll accept a motion, and we can discuss it. I think it gets to Mr. Jones's point about the help we had from the Health Services District. Resolution number 160 dot 2020, a resolution approving and authorizing the execution of the Bridge Payment Agreement, otherwise known as the Agreement, is entered into this fourth day of June by and among Kershaw County, otherwise known as the County, a body politic corporate subdivision of the state of South Carolina and Kershaw Health, the Health Services District of Kershaw County, otherwise known as the District, a South Carolina statutorily created body, corporate of perpetual succession. Now, therefore, it is hereby resolved by Kershaw County by and through the county council that the Bridge Payment Agreement is entered into this fourth day of June by and among the county, a body politic, et cetera, et cetera, and the district, a statutory body. And collectively, the parties is approved and the execution is authorized. In concluding, it says, "It is so resolved by Kershaw County Council this fourth day of June 2020." Uh, that's on page 33. Can we have a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion, Mr. Chair.
Uh, Mr. Snodgrass, a second.
Second.
Uh, Mr. Jones. Uh, Mr. Snodgrass, would you lead us in discussion?
Sure. I, I, again, I'd just kind of go along with what we've, this whole, this whole discussion we've been on. We've been on this several-week journey, uh, to get an understanding and to, to make sure everything's in the best interest for the county and for our citizens. And, um, again, thank you, Mr. Ogborne and our Health Services District. Uh, we certainly lean on him and, and the whole district, as, as they are the statutory, um, group that is, you know, that provides healthcare for, um, for a hospital for our county. So, thankful for them, their work on this, and, um, you know, I, I think it helps us move the ball forward. Thank you.
Yep. Uh, second, Mr. Jones, sir?
Just echo a little bit of Mr. Snodgrass, uh, thank you to the, yeah.
Anytime you echo me, I feel honored.
Well, I appreciate it.
I like that.
That's about the first, I think. But anyway, but I, but I truly mean it. Um, I wouldn't say it. But again, to going back to Chairman Ogborne and, and going back to the Health Services District, you're absolutely correct. Councilman Snodgrass, they, they've done a fantastic job, and they've, they've been good partners with us through this, and, uh, in all reality, this probably wouldn't have happened if they hadn't have been involved with us, because they put a lot into it. But anyway, thank you to all of them. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right. I'll give, uh, primacy to Mr. Connell, who's calling in. Ben, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I've said all along, I thought Prisma as a South Carolina-based entity would be a good partner in providing healthcare for Kershaw County with the Health Services District. Clearly, the Health Services District's motivated to make this happen, and they believe in Prisma. Several of the local doctors, um, that are at the hospital, the administration, and, uh, staff and other healthcare providers at Kershaw Health, that I've known through my time volunteering on the border there in the past, have indicated, uh, support for Prisma coming to the area as well. And, uh, I hope that this might be a step in the right direction in making that happen. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Other comments? Uh, Mr. Tucker?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to say, um, once again, I think you've already said it, and everyone else has, but, um, kudos to the Health Service District and their chairman, Ogborne, kudos to you, uh, Mr. Carpenter, and Mr. Morgan, and Mr. DeBose for all their hard work. And I'm just glad that sometimes when we don't agree, uh, we just need to sit down and talk and reason and, uh, and ration things out, where we can, um, come to some type of agreement that's good for the people. And I think that's what took place here overall for our citizens, and I'm greatly grateful and appreciative of all the, um, the conversations and, um, the meetings and time people have spent doing this, and, and I feel that it is right, and that, um, it is the best outcome that we're going to get as a whole. Thank you.
Other comments? Uh, Mr. Gardner?
Very, very briefly, uh, I think the, the people of Kershaw County won here, uh, simply because I think we're going to end up with very good healthcare, and, uh, we didn't have to go into their pocket to do it. So, I think the people of Kershaw County won. Thank you.
Uh, okay, I'm concluding, and we'll go quickly to a vote. Win-win was what we're after, and it was, for all parties. Everyone found something of value in the outcome. But that, our position had to be first established within the legal basis of the COPA, and that was where we got to the negotiations. I would encourage you all in the, in the future, as in the past, to back your negotiators once you've given them guidance, and that's what we have now with a united front to this point. And to that end, Mr. Carpenter deserves all credit for having established a vision and a pathway to this fourth of June. Come what may, on the fifth of June, I have no idea. And as Mr. Gardner has stated, uh, we don't know what negotiations will be for Prisma and LifePoint, because we don't oversee that. But we represent the people of the county, we are elected officials. The people in the Kershaw Health Services District are volunteers, and I would like you all to learn more about them if you don't, and thank them personally for their work and supporting us, as there's frankly not enough known about what that district does. It was set up by Mr. Bernard Baruch. It was a hospital I was born in. I still have the bill. It was $57 for eight days for my mom, uh, and it's now where my house is located, and made out of the same bricks when they tore the place down. Um, the, but the point here is, is that Health Services District oversees the funds, several tens of millions of dollars, and they serve as volunteers in overseeing our health district and our hospital, and, let me just not forget, uh, the Carish Wing, which is so important to many of our elderly people, and those of us who have loved ones there, uh, know how important that is. So, I, if you'll pardon me for having gone on about the Health Services District, you see how important they are, and they are appointed by this body, and they report to us, but they're acting independently based on their best lights, and give us, uh, what they can of that money. And by this action, Mr. Ogborne and his cohorts in that wonderful Health Services District have forestall us having to go against our reserves, which we vitally need as we're burning them up now, as we see with Amy Keiner here, and they also have the ability to help such things as the clinic, the CMC, providing, uh, mental assistance in the high schools, and so on and so forth. I would, I would encourage anyone listening to learn what you can about that wonderful organization that's so important to us, set up many, many decades ago, and to preserve that capability. Lastly, go out of your way to thank Mr. Carpenter. It was a pleasure to see how he preserved our capability, preserved our interests, and preserved our funds, so that we can be a great county that we are. With that, I call for a vote. Mr. Connell, how do you vote, sir?
I vote yes.
And all others signify by raising your hand if you're in support. Mary, it is unanimous. Thank you, gentlemen, and I move now. Uh, we have Mr. Con here. Congratulations on your son's high school graduation. Amy, thanks for taking time out of your busy day to be here. Uh, our next meeting is on the ninth. Mary, and can you be clear about what time we?
Seventeen thirty.
For you, Sammy, and for you, uh, your military background, Jimmy. Uh, there's also the day to vote, so I ask you all to get out and vote. And lastly, and no one here, as Mr. Jones has already done, thank you, is thank your sheriff, thank your police department, thank your men and women in uniform for keeping the peace and making a dialogue with demonstrators possible without violence. With that, can we have a motion to adjourn?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion we adjourn.
Mr. Tucker, a second?
Second.
And Mr. Gardner, a discussion? Thank you, gentlemen. It's been a great day in Kershaw County, an all-American county. With that, let's have a vote. Mr. Connell, how do you vote?
I vote yes.
And all others signify by raising your hand, and we are adjourned. Thank you very much.